All right, all right, all right. Good morning. I'm sorry. It's been a long day. Thanks, everybody, for being here. I just want to say at the very top, this is not an official meeting of the City Council. This is the traditional orientation of new councilors. I did, as the incoming mayor and mayor-elect, I did ask the returning councilors to come so we could do a little bit of an icebreaker. The genesis of that was that, right after the election, I was chatting with a former long-term school board member who mentioned that a number of years ago, when the school board had a large number of new councilors, that they had engaged in an informal icebreaking exercise so that people would get to know each other and just to build a little bit of collegiality. I thought that was a great idea. Fortunately, I have a very good, longtime friend, Ellen Koenig, who is a retired facilitator and consultant, who says now that she only works for Byron, and she only works for Byron pro bono. So she's volunteering her time, and we deeply appreciate that. So she agreed, after you had had a chance to start eating your sandwiches and salads, to conduct a brief icebreaking exercise. And after the icebreaking exercise is over, city staff will then conduct the normal orientation that is held for councilors. So at this juncture, I also would like to mention that Concord TV is recording this for public access. And so we do ask, it's a little bit cumbersome, but we're going to be using microphones so that Concord TV can get the best sound they can. We have a second microphone here, which we can pass around. And that's all the housekeeping. And at this point, I will hand it off to Ellen Koenig.
Thank you, Byron. Oh, wow, this is great, having a mic in a room like this. So as Byron said, my name is Ellen Koenig, and it is my absolute pleasure to be here working with you tonight on a pro bono basis, because Byron always gets me into good kinds of trouble, and so I always do what he asks me to do, which is great. So let me tell you just a little bit about me and tell you a little bit about what we're going to do tonight. There are some familiar faces in the room. I am a longtime facilitator. I've worked in nonprofits all my work life, starting off in the disability field and moving to New Hampshire Charitable Foundation for a long time, and finished my career in the Hampshire Center for Nonprofits, and finished my career at the New Hampshire Women's Foundation in addition to doing a lot of consulting for a lot of nonprofits. So I've worked with a lot of different organizations and their boards on strategic planning. And what I really feel about groups working together is that when you know each other a little bit, not if you agree, but if you can find something to like about that person, it makes it easier, especially if you don't agree. I remember a situation where I was serving on a board, it's actually Leadership New Hampshire, which you are chair right now, where there was a gentleman on it that I just didn't care for, and I had a really hard time hearing whatever he had to say whenever he spoke. And then one night at our retreat, we sat next to each other at dinner, because it was the last seat I could find. I didn't even want to sit next to him, but it was the last seat I could find, and fate put me there, because he started telling me about how he travels the world to build labyrinths. Now, you may know labyrinth, those are those meditative spirals that you see in spiritual places. And I thought, wow, tell me more. And I think that he and I were the last two people to leave dinner that night, because I couldn't hear enough about his hobby. So those are the kinds of things that we're going to be talking about tonight. So the reason that, what we're going to do first, let me start there. What we're going to do first is, I just want to hear from each of you, and I will try to catch you when you have a mouthful of food, so I'm really good at that. And I think I get credit for suggesting dinner tonight, Byron, too, don't I? I do get credit for that. Won't happen at other council meetings, I'm sure, but that was my first suggestion. Feed them, feed them. So we are going to just say a word or two about yourself. I know there are lots of new people here. Many of you may already know each other, but I really don't know any of you. So I'd love to hear just a word from you about your name, what ward, or whether you're an at-large or will be, I guess, tomorrow, counselor, and how long you've been doing this, and what brought you, what brought you to this table tonight?
No dirt.
No dirt, no dirt. We can do that after, we can do that after, for sure, for sure. And then after that, we are going to do a little something that helps us both understand ourselves and this team that we have here. And let me just say a word about team building. Again, back to some board experience that I had several years ago, when I was working at the Center for Nonprofits, I was interviewing people who wanted to be part of a group that provided training to new board members called the Hoffman-Hoss Fellowship. And so I needed to interview everybody, and I had this one guy that I was interviewing, and he said, "I should be a great board member, because I'm a CEO of my company." And I said, "Well, you know, you may find it a little more challenging to be a board member than it is to be a CEO, because as a CEO, you get to make all the decisions unilaterally. You decide what's going to happen, what information comes in, and how that decision gets played out." I said, "As a board member, you are one vote in 10, or 12, or 15 people, and you have to come to consensus with that group." So I said, "You may find it way more challenging than being a CEO." And I think he actually did. He told me later that he really did. So this is what we're going to do. We will, I guess we'll pass the mic around. Again, if you would just tell me your name, what part of, what ward you are representing, or if you're an at-large counselor, and whether you're new, or whether you've been doing this for a while, and kind of why you're here. And if you can do it all in a minute, even better. So, great.
I'm Karen McAdams. I'm Ward Four Counselor, second term plus special election. And, who is it?
Why you're here?
Because we were told Byron said.
So we all are that way. No, but just, you know, what is it you hope to bring to the table?
I just hope that we can all work together, and we can learn more about each other so that we can have a commonality.
Great.
I'm Michelle Thor. I am newly elected to Ward Two. I come to this position because my three daughters have grown into high school beyond, and I have been afforded more time in life, and I want to come here and bring my love of community even to a larger scale.
Hi, I'm Jeff Foote, Ward Ten. I'm also new, one of the newbies, I guess. And why am I here? I guess, I guess, why am I here? Basically, I work for another community. I'm an engineer, and frankly, there's a lot of good decisions that are made, I think, as a result of my involvement in the community. And that's, in short, why I think I wanted to become involved in this community, so I can help this community make good decisions and work as a collaborative effort with all of you. So that's why.
I have to follow. My name is Ali Sekou, and I'm the City Council of Ward Eight. Why, I'm a newbie at work, so nobody's. Why I'm here, public service has always been me, and I'm here to give back to the community that has given me so much, and I'm here to be a public servant. Thank you.
Hi, it's Paula from Ward Six in Concord. What was the other thing I need to ask?
That you are returning?
Oh, yes, I'm returning for my second year, so I've only been in one year, so I'm slowly learning.
Then why are you here?
Why am I here? To learn more about city government.
I'm Jimmy Foster, Ward, I'm new from Ward Seven. I'm here because I got the crazy idea to stand up for my values. I've been working on homelessness and housing for a couple of years, and I thought, let's try to do, work with the City Council to help end homelessness in this community. That's my big passion.
I'm Brent Todd, Ward One, City Counselor, which is Pennycook, a good portion of Pennycook, and I've been a counselor for 10 years now. And I'm here beyond for the delicious food, thank you very much. I am also here to try to continue to give back to the community that I love, and also to work collaboratively. I really enjoy teamwork and working on a council. It's not anything that any one of us does, but we all, as a unit, collaboratively can do a lot for the community. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Are you timing up?
You're great, everything.
Good evening. My name's Nathan Fennessey. I'm an at-large counselor. I was just elected to my second term. I'm here tonight because Byron told me I had to come, and also because I wanted the opportunity to get to see some of the new councilors that I haven't spent much time with. The reason I'm on the council is my dad told me long ago, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem, and that's what got me involved in public service, so thank you.
I'm Jennifer Cradick. I'm the Ward Three Counselor. I have been the Ward Three Counselor since 2015. Prior to that, I had a two-year hiatus, but I was the Ward Two Counselor, so I'm kind of on my fifth tour of duty. And I'm here tonight because I have to learn how to follow Byron's instructions. I got involved in community building through the Main Street Project and Rethinking Main Street prior to us achieving, getting the $4.71 million grant from the Federal Highway. We conducted over 70 community outreach discussions about what we wanted to see Main Street be from one building edge to the other, and it was through that community outreach that I learned so much about other people in the city and where they live, and I wanted to continue that collaborative effort, and I'm super excited to do this with the colleagues that sit around this table.
Hi, I'm Judith Kurtz. I am a newly elected at-large counselor, so it's my first term and first office. I am here because I am a community builder, and that's the kind of volunteer work that I've been doing, and I'm eager to become more involved and really work hard on behalf of this great city.
Hi, I'm Amanda Grady Sexton. I am an at-large counselor, and I am heading into my 14th year on the City Council. I serve on the City Council because I absolutely love the city of Concord and everything about it, and all its people, and municipal government. And I really love, especially, working one-on-one with constituents and with city staff to help navigate government, because it can be a little tricky sometimes. And I'm here today because I'm really excited to meet all of our new friends and to find out about each other in ways that we're going to work together as we embark in our new journey in the next two years. Welcome to all of you.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Fred Keach. I've been on the council for 16 years, so beginning of my 17th, I'm an at-large counselor. I was first brought to this calling, I guess, to make a difference, and I found that to be the case. One of my biggest observations is the difference you can make at the community level versus every higher level of government that you go up. So if there's an opportunity here to really make a difference, then that's exciting. Why I'm here is my father worked for the city of Concord for 40 years. He used to come home and complain about the council every night. My mother worked for the state executive council, would come home and complain about that council every night. So when I was finally elected, I announced to them that I was now part of the problem.
Hi, I'm Stacy Brown. I am the Ward Five City Counselor. I'm going into my second term, third year. I am really excited about tonight, and I just want to congratulate Byron. This is an excellent idea. It's wonderful. I've gotten to know a few of the new, or all of the new councilors. They're amazing, but I think this is really important for all of us to kind of connect with each other as a whole. So thank you, Byron, for doing this. And going into these next two years, I'm really looking forward to working with everyone here and focusing on ending the homelessness problem that we have in our community. I want to work towards sustainability and equitable access to municipal resources.
Hi, I'm Chris Schultz. I'm new, a year in my ward, Ward Nine. This is where we vote. And why am I here? I've been interested in citizenship and politics, government, since I was 10 years old, so I'm one of those kind of people. And I married into Concord, so by choice. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. And I realize I forgot to say in my introductory words that I'm a 40-year resident of Concord. I know I'm not a native, but my kids are and all of that. So I've lived in this great city for 40 years. My kids all went through Concord Public Schools, and I just adore this city, and I thank each and every one of you for the work that you do, because that is a big part of what makes the city as wonderful as it is. So there you have it. Okay, now for just a little bit of what I hope is painless homework. So I'm going to pass out a form. Some of you may already know your Myers-Briggs personality type. This is kind of a 30-second Myers-Briggs test. And what's important, certainly, is to be reminded of how you function as a person. But what this is going to show us is what does this team look like? What are the perspectives of the folks around the table? And how do they think? How do they process information? How do they interact with the kinds of decisions that you all, and conversations you all will be dealing with? So I'm going to pass out a form. It has 24 attributes. If you could pass it down, Byron, if you could pass that down. I have pens. If anybody needs a pen, just raise your hand, okay? And what you are going to do is look at these attributes and simply decide what is closest. Chris, could you pass that one?
Sure.
Thank you. What is closest to what you, how you see yourself? The key is do not overthink this. These are not polar opposites that you see in front of you. They are suggestions of ways to be. They are not opposite. So when you're done, look up and move on to our next task. How hard was it? Okay, so next thing we're going to do is everybody gets to move around a little bit. You may notice that some of your numbers are really high in certain categories, others very low, or you may be one of those middle-of-the-room kind of people, where all of your numbers are similar. But what I'd like you to do now is take a look at your highest numbers, and if H is your highest number, by at least two points, at least two. If not, you might be sort of a cross between two colors. But if H is your highest number, you're a red. If I is your highest number, you're a yellow. If J is your highest number, you're a green. And if K is your highest number, you're a blue. Any questions about what color you are?
I'll follow if you... No, please.
If you really straddle two, you may stand, I mean, if you completely straddle two, you can stand in the middle between those two colors. But if there's a difference of at least three, stand by your color, okay?
The rainbow room.
This is the rainbow, right, this is a rainbow exercise. So you can see, we've got red in that corner, we have blue right here, we have yellow in this corner, and we have green over there. So please, stand with your people.
You and I understand.
You are, well, shall say. I'm a green red. If you're straddling two, stand in the middle.
What was the second one? Yellow? What's color?
J was yellow. No, I was yellow.
All right. Let's take a look at what we see here. We have three reds, right? Three reds right over here, three solid reds here. Wow, we have a lot of green people in this room. Six greens. Wow, that's something. Okay, and we have two blues over here. How interesting. And no, yellow. That's interesting. Now, you guys in the middle. Jim, what are you?
Yellow and green.
Yellow, green. Okay, Chris?
We're both Christmas with green and red.
You're green and red. And you?
Yellow and red.
Yellow and red. Okay. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what these colors mean, and see what you think about the extent to which it applies to you. Okay, let's start with our most populated group, our greens. Greens think about feelings. They are persuasive, they are group-oriented, they are eager, outgoing, and gregarious, they are other-oriented, open-minded, agreeable, involved, extroverted, they're motivators, and they make good salespeople. Salespeople, I should say.
Or lawyers.
Right. Same thing. So let's say a little bit more about greens. You live an emotional life. It's important to you how people are feeling about a situation. You are more concerned that people are happy, you're good in groups, some are joiners of groups, depending on the situation, and you are often promoters, getting people excited about something or an idea. You tend toward informal authority, as opposed to other groups who tend more towards formal authority. And enjoying people is your top priority, and you organize through and with people, as opposed to systems. Okay? Let's strike the chord for anybody. Completely right, completely wrong? People can live with that? Okay. Let's see what our next group is. Let's see what our red friends are like. Okay. Red folks, really focus on action. You are forthright, you're forceful, objective, bold, and firm. You are productive, efficient, and effective. You are frank, realistic, constructive, active, positive. You're builders, you're dynamic, you're go-getters and doers. So red, a red person reacts very quickly to censurate information. You want to do something about an issue or a problem. You can become impatient if action is not taken. You get, you get your strokes from doing, actually doing, as opposed to just listening. You tend to be very practical versus theoretical. Decision-making tends to be based on past experiences, and the greatest thing for you is to get stuff done. How does that sound? Anything like you? Does it resonate in some way? You like that, huh? Okay, you like it. Let us look at our blue people. Okay, our blues. So blues really focus on thought and philosophy, just thinking more broadly. You have empathy, you are kind, inventive, and creative. You may be introverted. You're thinkers and philosophers. You're calm and aware. You can be artistic, self-sufficient, individualistic, intuitive, quiet, planner, ideological, abstract, future-oriented, and strategic. So our blue folks are more inner-directed. So you spend a lot of time in your own head. That sound familiar?
Abstract, I agree with that.
Yes, yeah. You're conceptualizers. You tend to get bored with everyday activities. You're very intuitive, you're very oriented to ideas, and you base many ideas on intuition, which can cause a problem sometimes. You dislike relying on external authority, and you tend to think you can outweigh people, and you take your time. You take your time with things. Does that sound anywhere in the ballpark? Okay. Now, let's see what we're missing over here. We may have to have people run next time on their color personality so this doesn't happen, but it's really interesting, because yellow people are, they really focus on accuracy. They are cautious, systemic, precise, logical. They like to see things regulated. Yeah, that's the staff back there in the corner.
That's why they're new.
There you go. They are accurate. They are conventional and moderate. Okay, so here's what our yellow folks would be doing if they were with us. They focus on precision. They are logical, they are problem-oriented, they like to be in situations with formal authority, and they want to see the bottom line of any kind of test. They're very fair. They won't do things out of emotionalism. They want things based on fact and data, and they like to do things that can be measured. So, how interesting. Well, we don't have any of those folks. And I'm hoping that you folks in the middle heard yourselves somewhere in this discussion. So I want to pass the mic around and just ask you, what do you think about what you see in the room here?
Can we go back to the seats?
Yeah, let's come back to the seats, yeah. That's a good idea. What did you see in the, in the room?
I don't know if this is what you're going for, but I feel like when you described the other ones that I scored lower in, I'm like, I actually value those things, too. So, I don't know. I think that, I think that I could identify with some traits of others as well.
Great. Other thoughts?
Other thoughts. I love that the two reps, it feels like, were in between, Ali and Chris, where Chris is a state rep and Ali is business rep, you know, president of a Muslim association. So I thought that was really interesting, that they were both red and green, and that the at-large councilors were in, were all green, right? I think all the at-large councilors.
Except for Fred.
Except for Fred.
Fred is red.
Fred is red.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
I just have one observation, and that's a bit skeptical of self-reporting. So I would be, I would be interested to, it would be interesting to take the self-report and compare that against our peers and how they might rate us, and that might be a much different result.
It could very well be. You're right. Good point. Thank you. So Jennifer and I have almost identical numbers, and she said jokingly, "We're either going to, what, butt heads or get along." And I said, "We're going to get along, but we're going to get along because we're going to choose to get along." And this is what you were saying about find something you can like about the other person, even if you disagree, right? Like, I can see someone...
I can see someone's tenacity or I can see the way they're motivating and recognize it as something that clearly I do myself, right? Even if we're on opposite sides. So, I think it's very powerful information.
Good. Go ahead, Jennifer.
So, I was stunned that Judith and I shared the same initials and almost scored exactly the same. But Amanda and I do not have the same initials and scored almost exactly the same. And Stacy and I have no initials sharing whatsoever and scored almost exactly the same. It's a little stunning. But I had a wonderful group. Thank you for being nearby, Renee.
I was going to say, I think the thing that stuck out to me was how different I was from the rest of the greens.
How so?
I think I was the only one who scored above one on the i's. I was very different than everybody else in that group.
So, is i yellow? So, you upset me a little.
Yeah.
Okay, interesting.
Other thoughts over here? What are the implications for how you do your work? I'll come over to you. What are the implications for how you're going to do your work and how different colors will look at information and look at decisions and conversations that you have?
Thanks. I was really a yellow, but I saw Fred over there buy himself.
Okay, other thoughts? How is this going to impact your work going forward? Thoughts on that?
Well, you're closer, Jim, so I'll give it to you and then I'll go across the rest.
So, I have two reflections. One is both, we might be different amongst us, I mean, from each other. But also, I think each of us are complex. So, I bring, sometimes I'm good, sometimes I'm not so good. And I think that's what we also need to appreciate is the complexity within ourselves and to have a little compassion for ourselves if we screw up or lose it or something and then compassion for each other. So, I think both, there's diversity between people, but also in each of us is sort of complex and so we might appreciate that also.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I came across, and I am very quiet, so I don't say a lot in any meeting, but I think a lot. But I just don't say any, so that's the way I work. I've always worked that way.
So, I've done this a couple of different times in the context of teaching and as a teacher with other teachers and then also with students. And one of the things that I took away as a teacher is sort of what you were just saying, Paula, that sometimes you might assume that the most talkative student or the one asking the most questions has the most active engagement with material, right? But really, there are many ways that people sit with things and process them. And so, as a teacher, I had to learn to like value, also create wait time if I had an urgency, which, you know, my color suggests that I like to teach the thing and then keep moving, but allow time for folks who process differently to process. And when you become mindful of that, right? When those more quiet people contribute something, it often really shifts the entire conversation because they've been sitting with it in a different way. So, I think that in terms of all of us working together, appreciating what everyone brings to the table and also then at times, like, we all looked at staff and started laughing, but we need them, right? We need them to say this is the bottom line or to keep us. And that's true within council as well, right? Like, I'm not the numbers person, for example, so I know I need to look to the numbers people when I have an idea and really value that input.
Wonderful comment. Thank you.
We'll just do one or two more comments and then we'll wrap up.
It's kind of been said, but our strengths, along with our differences, complement one another. If we were all reds, we would be a flat, no-good group. But our strengths and our differences complement each other and if we embrace that, I think it will be a good thing. It could be a better thing.
Last comment before I ask you all one question. So, when something is before you that you are trying to decide upon, say a question about whether or not to move forward with a new plan. What is the red group going to be asking? What is their question about this particular issue? So, you're trying to think through an issue. Reds, for example, might say, "How long is it going to take for us to get to this? To get this done? How long is that going to take?" The yellows might say, "Where's the data to support this? Where's the data? Where's the data?" That's what your yellows over there will be providing you. The greens, our hefty green group, might say, "How are people going to feel about this? How's the community going to react to this?" And the blues might say, "They'll be thinking, they'll be quietly thinking and pondering. Maybe they're thinking three generations out on this idea and how important it is because it sows the seeds for something in the future." So, I just want to leave you with that, that there is, just as you said, there is great value in everybody bringing their own personality to the table and patience as people process things differently and need different information in front of them in order to make a decision. And with that, I will bid you good evening and again, my deep thanks for the work that you do as a citizen of this great city. Thank you very much.
Do you want to take a break? Everybody clean up their areas or do whatever you want?
We can do that. Do people want to take a like five-minute break?
Welcome, everyone. You'll want to be, so we're going to go through the City Council packets that we have here for the January 3 agenda. So, whether you're on your laptop or your iPad, it's titled City Council on 2024-01 for 3:00, 6:00 PM City Council Orientation. So, we have a number of things to go through. We've already had the icebreaker. We have, is going to be a City Council list to be distributed under separate cover once that's all complete and the City Clerk, Janice, the City Clerk has all the information and all the contact information for people.
Just have the final information today.
So, that will go out tomorrow?
Yes.
So, we'll email that out to all of you tomorrow. And what we're going to do tonight is for the rest of the evening, go through the items on the agenda with all the attachments. Jim Kennedy has a very informative PowerPoint presentation which he'll do in the middle piece here and then we'll finish it up with this short pieces on the financial section. So, as you can see, it's item number three. Has everybody got their agenda up? Does everybody?
No.
Just want to make sure I don't lose anybody in there.
Because I can't get my phone. No, that's okay.
Just yell out if... So, the item number four on the agenda is if you click that... You picking me up, Mike?
I'm still picking you up, but if you use that, that'd be great.
Testing.
Got it?
That's much better.
Got it? Okay. So, if you click that item number four, again, if you're at home following this when this is cable cast, you'd be able to also look at this agenda. You'll see there's a department head listing and that, of course, is just simply all the department heads in the city with all their phone numbers and their addresses as, of course, they're scattered throughout the city. Again, this is just for an information piece for you to have with you. Feel free to call any of those folks if you need anything. Item number five, which is the one below that, is department directory. So, this is a more comprehensive list and what it includes is by department alphabetically, the staff members in the departments that you're welcome to contact if you need information and their phone numbers. And so, if you need something from administration, obviously, you can contact me directly or you can contact Sue Stevens, who is my assistant, or Stephanie Breton, who's the public information officer. And same thing with City Clerk. You have, you know, the City Clerk, Janice Bonafon, who's the Parryton, is the deputy. I won't read this, obviously. And the two people who work with you is Peter and Sarah are in there. You go down through all the departments. These are the people who feel free to call. If you don't want to start, you know, once you get to know folks over the years, you'll feel comfortable calling the highway superintendent about something. Or if you don't feel comfortable at this point, you may want to call the general services director, who would be that person supervisor. Or if you don't feel comfortable, then call me and then, you know, we'll put you in touch with the right people or we'll handle issue four. But you should stick to this list. These are the people that you should be contacting. You shouldn't be contacting anybody else outside of this list if you need assistance. Any questions with that? Item number six is simply department descriptions. These are just the sheets actually that are in the budget. So, when you go and look at the city's budget, which was approved in June of 2023, which is we're in the middle of fiscal year 2024 right now, these are the descriptions. So, you can just generally see the mission and the core responsibilities of each of the departments. So, just to give you a refresher on those. Again, if you're not sure, because each community that you've ever lived in or communities that you may work in or that you're familiar with, different responsibilities fall into different departments and different communities. So, you may not be aware where it is. If you get confused, just get ahold of me or somebody, you know, on the staff and we can tell you whether it's a community development engineering issue or a general services, you know, administration issue. So, again, it varies from community to community. And what we'll do for the next several pieces, not necessarily in this order. You see, we have City Council rules, which Jim will be, Jim Kennedy, our city solicitor, will be presenting. And he has a PowerPoint presentation, which I believe is going to stand over there by the speaker and go through. So, we're going to go over City Council rules, which are your rules that you, meaning city councils of the past, have established and how you operate. The city charter, which the community has established, very much like the school district charter, you know, that took place a few years ago, essentially our constitution. And then you have right-to-know requests, which are very important, particularly regarding information, records meetings or whatnot. And then Jim is going to touch on the code of ethics. So, the next big piece, the biggest section of this meeting is Jim talking about these items and how you want to do that. Jim, are you going to want to take comments as you go along? Or you want to go through it or how do you want to do it?
Sure, we can do comments as we go along. We just kind of move it progressively and efficiently. By way of introduction, I'm Jim Kennedy. I'm the city attorney for this wonderful city. I've been in this position for a little more than 14 years now. I was an assistant attorney general prior to that and then in private practice and then worked for the courts prior to that. So, I'm with you, very happy to be with you tonight. Look forward to working with this council. We have six new members, which I think is the most in my tenure. I think we had four or five one-year and we were in awe of that. But six is truly tremendous and really looking forward to working with this group. Just by way of further introduction, I don't know if you know, but Brian Lebrun is back there. He's our finance director and department head and deputy city manager. And Matt Walsh is deputy city manager for community development. You'll be working a lot with them over the next couple of years. So, let's get started here. Hopefully, everything works. We check, oh, look at that. Here we go. So, the most important thing for a city is its charter, okay? For the state, it's the constitution, right? But for a city, it's our charter. It's our founding document. It's what makes City of Concord, Concord. Our first charter goes back to 1853 and that was actually created by an act of the New Hampshire State Legislature, okay? Now, it's done a little bit differently. We have a statute and actually a constitutional amendment that we'll talk about here in just a minute as to how cities and towns are created and how charters are created in those cities and towns. The last time that we had a charter commission in the city was back in 1992. You may have observed that the school district, which is a separately distinct entity from the city, had a charter commission several years ago where they underwent revising their charter and their corporate structure. But we have not revised ours since 1992. It's incidentally was when a certain statute was created in New Hampshire, creating city charters. This is just by way of information. This is the statute or the constitutional amendment in New Hampshire that allows charters to exist and municipalities to adopt and to amend their charters. And our 39. This is just by way of just background information. This is the statute RSA 49B that allows, it talks about the process and procedure if a city or town wants to amend its charter. And by way of information, we actually do amend our charter every couple, or was it every 10 years now? With respect to the ward lines. And so, we adopt new ward lines in the city and those are, I think the last time that we did that, we changed that to be in our ordinances. And so, all of our ordinances now, all of our wards now are contained in the city's ordinances. But prior to that, we changed them through the 49B process in our charter. 49C just lays out all the rules for the charter. Everything that's in 49C is in our charter, actually. The city charter, do you guys have that with you? Okay, you might want to just take a quick peek at it. I tried to work with our IT department by touching on this link and that is beyond the scope of, I think we've talked to NASA about how to do it and we couldn't do it. So, you guys have it electronically. I would have to jump leaps and bounds on my computer to get it up there. So, we're just going to take a look at it really quick and walk through it in a way that hopefully is effective. And so, the charter, you'll see the first section that establishes the city as the city, right? And then the second section talks about the wards and since mentioned that those wards are contained in the city ordinances. The next few sections, they're going to talk about the city clerk and the elections and how you were all elected and that was in accordance with our city charter. Then we have recounts and more election information. Then we talk about the governing body and determine the number of members. That's all of the city councils. We go along, we talk about the mayor, the mayor pro temp, qualifications. You know, you are all qualified, you meet those elements, I'm expecting. Removal, if that ever happens. That has not happened since I've been here in 14 years. There was a case back in 1966 where somebody called mayor appointment was removed from office. We can talk about that sometime if you'd like. There was, if vacancies occur during this term, there's a process to fill those vacancies that's set forth in the charter. Talks about councillors at large, special elections, compensation. You guys are all doing it for the money, I know that. Meetings, and we're going to talk about the right-to-know law here in just a minute, but that all meetings are in accordance with the right-to-know law. This, by the way, is not a meeting. None of you have taken an oath of office. This is a gathering, a group discussion, an orientation among residents of the city. Ordinances, it talks about how that process takes place. The general powers of the city council, you can take a look at that. We have what's called the city manager form of government. That's under our 649C, our charter. That's Thomas Bell, our city manager, who's effectively the CEO of the corporation of the City of Concord. We are a corporate entity and we are the city manager form of government and 15-member city councils. So, the city council's job effectively is to hire the city manager, right? Pass the budget, you know, control all the cost items and pass all the ordinances, policies and things of that nature. It's all laid out here in the charter. We have a removal section for the city manager, vacancy section for the city manager, the appointive powers of the city manager. And then also pay attention to section 27, which is non-interference of the city council. So, as individual members, don't interfere with the day-to-day operations of the city. Enforcement, and that all those do that non-interference clause. And then it talks about appointive officers of the city. officers of the city, administrative departments. There's a purchasing procedure that Brian Lebrun knows very well, and that's how the city's finance department operates, we've got finance. The budget procedure, which you will all take a very big part in, starting in May, through the summer, and then the budget hearing process, the date of final adoption, transfer appropriations, which happens from time to time throughout a fiscal year. We do audits, bonds, you'll participate with that. We have compensation, we have a personnel appeals board for issues that may arise with any City of Concord employees. Council resolutions, oath of office, you guys will be doing that, I believe, very soon, maybe tomorrow night. And I think the rest of this, you guys can walk through. If there's any specific questions, we can answer those, feel free to give me a call, and we can walk through them. But for purposes of moving beyond slide, what are we, six? We got to get through 57, so we got to make some time here. And I promise you, I can move these slides very quickly. So, but let's move on. So the charter is our founding document. Yes, sir, councillor fantasy.
Can you just explain, maybe give a little more color to that interference provision that you identified?
Sure, we can read it verbatim if you'd like, because I think that's probably the best way to explain. So if you look at, what was that, number 27? Non-interference by the city council. The city council shall act in all matters as a body. Members of the city council shall not seek individually to influence the official acts of the city manager, or any other officer, or to direct or request, except in writing, the appointment of any person to or removal from office, or to interfere in any way with the performance by such officers of their duties. But they may, what was that? They may make suggestions and recommendations. So you can't interfere, but you may suggest and recommend. Does that help? Okay, good. And members of, that's what we can talk about, the violation. But it recommends, suggests, but not interfere. Okay?
Is that something we do?
A charter commission? No, I don't, I mean, certainly there can be a petition for a charter commission if there was to have an interest in amending this charter. Then there's a way that you can go about amending the charter through a petition through the clerk's office. This council can itself seek to add something to the charter itself through a process, and then put it on the ballot for the voters at an upcoming election. And that's how the charter is amended, through the election process. But you do not do that like by virtue of an ordinance. There's a process we'll talk about here shortly, how we amend and adopt ordinances. That's much different than opening up the charter to amend the charter, which is a very significant process. Okay, let's move on past slide six. Okay, so yeah, here we go. We just finished the charter, now we're back to the Constitution, Part 1, Article 8. And Part 1, Article 8 is very important, because that lays the foundation to New Hampshire's right to know law. Oftentimes, will people, has everyone heard of the right to know law? Raise your hands. Ever heard of it? Okay. So that's the state version of the Freedom of Information Act, right? So the Freedom of Information Act applies to federal government, New Hampshire's right to know law applies to New Hampshire government, and Part 1, Article 8, if you can't get it under New Hampshire's right to know law, chances are you might be able to get in Part 1, Article 8. So that's where we're going to start here. It's also important to know that the right to know law covers public meetings, how meetings are held and conducted, right? This isn't necessarily a meeting here, so we're not subject to it. And records, access to governmental records. So if you were to make a governmental records request, how is it that a citizen, making that request, may obtain governmental records as the City of Concord holds, that the state of New Hampshire holds, that the town of Bo holds? There's a certain process, and that's what the right to know law covers. Tonight, we are going to talk about the meetings portion of the right to know law. We're not going to get into the records portion, because that will take a lot more time, and that's really what the agency portion, the city manager portion, the agency portion of the City of Concord deals with every decade. So we're going to more focus on how you conduct a meeting. Okay? This is just the preamble to the right to know law, openness. This is taking a moment, I agree. Openness is in the conduct of public business is essential to a democratic society. So the idea is sunshine on government, what you're doing at all times, and keeping it available to the public, there's transparency, and so there's accountability, the public knows what government is up to. There's sunshine on government. Meeting, so this is important with respect to the right to know law. How we define meeting, okay? And so meeting means the convening of a quorum of the membership of the public body, okay? And we, if we look closely at our charter, the meeting quorum is defined as a majority. So there's eight of you, so there are 15 of you, we need eight, right? And so that's the quorum. So you need eight, you need a quorum. And then meetings may occur in person, we can talk about this in just a minute, telephone, electronic communication, in other way, in any way that people can communicate contemporaneously and speak and hear and understand each other. And this is the important part. So it's the quorum, everyone can speak contemporaneously, can understand and hear each other, and then it's discussing matters upon over which the public body has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. Okay? So if the city council is together, there's a quorum, you can all speak and hear each other, and you're talking about Karen McNairy's grocery list, well, that's really not a meeting because nothing you have jurisdiction and advisory power over, right? So, but if you're talking about buying a new fire truck, well, then we have a meeting, right? Yes?
So does that definition of quorum hold for boards and committees, the same definition of quorum?
Yes, yeah, so like, for instance, if we have a five-member zoning board, three will constitute a quorum. This is important. Chance of social meetings do not constitute meetings. So for instance, if eight of you end up at the bowling alley next Thursday night, and you all decide to start bowling together, well, that's a chance of social meeting, right? So you didn't plan it, you ended up there, you're bowling, and so long as you don't talk about buying that fire truck, you're okay, right? So don't turn a chance of social meeting into a meeting. Physical presence, so quorum is necessary. Under New Hampshire law, remember, in COVID, we did a lot of electronic meetings, the governor lifted this requirement for the physical presence requirement, where we can meet electronically, as long as we have the quorum. Now you need a physical presence that COVID is over. So in order to have a meeting at the city council, we need eight physically present, okay? We can have seven appear electronically, but we need eight physically present. And so this just talks about you can appear electronically if it's necessary, you want to let the mayor, or the presiding officer, know why you're appearing electronically, and you need to state why you're doing so on the record, and we want to know if you're appearing electronically, who's in the room with you, okay? So I'm not sure why the legislature wants to know that, but they want to know who's in the room with you if you're appearing electronically.
In case you're influenced.
Oh, yeah, that might be.
That was a big deal. Like twisting your arm behind the scenes.
And so, and obviously, if you're appearing electronically, your vote counts, and we're going to have to do a roll call vote, obviously, if you're appearing electronically. This is important, communications outside a meeting, including but not limited to sequential communications among members of a public body, should not be used to circumvent the spirit and purpose of the right to know law, okay? So we don't want to have a telephone tag or email chain going between counselors regarding on something that you have jurisdiction and control over, okay? Meetings shall not be conducted by email, we're not having email meetings, like email votes, how are you going to, you know, so that we tally votes by email. I know that some private entities do that, we don't do that in New Hampshire for public bodies. We can have people record meetings, we have, although we're not in a meeting right now, you'll see Michael, or one of his colleagues at our city council meetings, our zoning board meetings, planning board meetings, any of the 50 or more committees that we have in the city, they're allowed to be videotaped and recorded.
Does, if somebody's recording, do they need to notify the group that it's being recorded, like if they just want to record a meeting?
No, they can record a meeting.
Okay, they don't need to know.
No, notice, no notice. Meeting shall not include, and so this is important, collective bargaining, okay?
Can I go back to email for a minute?
Sure.
So can you just expand on that? Can I just email the whole group and ask a question about something that took place during the meeting, or advocate about a position that I may take with respect to the upcoming vote?
So you don't want to have the opportunity to be in a situation where you're having a contemporaneous communication with everybody via email, and turn your email into a meeting, which would be a violation of the right to know law. But also, if you go back to the slide before this, it talks about sequential communications among members, and I think that's talking about email communications among members regarding a matter of where the body has jurisdiction and control. So you want to stay away from those types of communications and activity.
How about sex?
I think that's a communication that may fall under that definition. So meetings shall not include, collective bargaining's a big one, you'll learn through your process that we have six labor unions here in the city, 500 employees, and a big part of what the city council does is participate relative to cost items on collective bargaining for all the collective bargaining units that we have here. Those are not a meeting. So when you meet via collective bargaining matter, that is not a meeting, no minutes need to be taken, it doesn't exist for purposes of the right to know law. Much in the same vein is, if you're reading with me as your legal counsel, or Danielle Passick, who's the deputy city solicitor, is your legal counsel, that is not a meeting. That's called an attorney-client privileged communication. Consultation with legal counsel does not qualify as a meeting under the right to know This is just a notice requirement, our clerk takes care of all of that, but if you're a member of any committee, just be certain that the notice is taken care of, because no meeting can take place unless that notice requirement is satisfied, which is two appropriate places, usually one is our website, 24 hours notice. The minutes, our clerk, or you'll designate somebody on a committee who's going to be taking minutes, generally, what is required, the names of the members and persons appearing, a brief discussion, a description of the subject matters discussed, and all final decisions, okay? So they don't have to be verbose, we're not talking about transcripts, we're talking about those things identified there, and they're available within five business days. Non-public session, you may have heard about this, there may be times that a public body needs to go into non-public session. You can only go into non-public session for one of the statutory reasons that's listed in 91A3 Roman Num 2. And so under 91A3 Roman Num 2, I believe it's A through L now, is reasons that you can go into non-public session. We'll talk about just a couple of them now, others might come up, but basically, your purposes for going in would be dismissal, promotion, compensation, hiring. One of your jobs each year is setting the salary to the city manager, hiring the city manager each year, and that is one of the sections that you would go into. Another big one that we do, I would say almost monthly, is acquisition and consideration of sale or lease of real estate. And so you'll be in quite a bit on that. Litigation, there may be a reason that we go into non-public session for litigation under 91A3 versus attorney-client privileged communication.
Good question. So are there minutes of non-public sessions? Are we obligated to keep minutes of those sessions?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then, so where are they?
We're getting there. And then legal advice might be another reason we just talked about for going in non-public session. There's a protocol to do it, the mayor's familiar with it, there's other members here familiar with it, your legal counsel will be familiar with it to walk you through it the first few times, to the extent that you need some guidance there. And this little cheat sheet is available for anybody who wants it. If anyone were to object, like for instance, there's a motion to go into non-public session, you're in non-public session, and then a member of the body feels that it shouldn't be a non-public session, you can object. If the meeting continues, then the objection will go on the record, and then that person gets a free pass, they can stay in the meeting, and they get a free pass if for some reason there's a violation of the right to know law for being in the non-public session. Here's your minutes. So we said that minutes for public meetings are due in five days, these are due in three, so 72 hours, unless there's a motion to seal the minutes, okay? And typically, the seal of minutes would be a reason that would adversely affect the reputation of somebody in the community, or would render the proposed action ineffective. So if you're there for a real estate matter, obviously, you don't want to say, well, we're willing to lease for this amount, or we're willing to buy for that amount, because that would render the whole purpose of going into non-public session ineffective. This is the seal or not seal, so you make the decision if you're going to seal the minutes. If there's a motion to seal the minutes, you need the two-thirds majority of the council to do so, and then you, that vote for, you vote to exit non-public session, and then the vote to seal the minutes takes place in public session. And like I said, that will be guided by our mayor, our mayor pro temp, and certainly legal counsel, the city manager, to the extent that there's questions. This is just by way of information, that there are remedies for violations of the right to know law. The remedies apply to what I talked about earlier, for the records portion of the right to know law, and for meetings. So if you violate meeting rules under the right to know law, there can be, somebody can bring a cause of action in Superior Court, or to the right to know law enforcement, and seek remedies. And these are remedies that are available for somebody.
How often does something like that happen?
Not often with City of Concord. In fact, I don't think it's ever happened here, at least since I've been. But
Because other cities have a lot.
It is very, it is a rampant practice. And so mostly with the records portion of the right to know law, not as much with meetings, although it has happened with meetings over the years. But records, it does happen from time to time. We had an issue once with records here in the past five years before we prevailed, it was on law enforcement records, that we didn't disclose, and the Supreme Court agreed that we don't disclose those records. And, but it does happen. So 91A, if you look at the annotations to 91A, they're quite thick and significant.
Can you talk about unsealing of non-public minutes?
Yes, and so there's a process that is actually new under the right to know law to unseal the minutes, and there's currently a 10-year time period for bodies to do that. And I believe that our clerk is leading a charge here fairly soon to undergo that process that we laid out, to unseal minutes that are no longer necessary to be sealed. Like for instance, if we bought that building, or we sold that building, then no longer need to seal those minutes. So there's a process to do that.
What is, Jim, when is that, from what period to what period is that?
I don't have it in front of me right now, but it's, Janice and I have worked on it, there's a procedure that we've laid out, but we have, I believe it's a 10-year time period to come up with with everything.
But then you log into effect in 2022.
So it starts, so it starts in minutes as of 2022.
We can talk about that now, yeah, it might go back. We can talk about that now, yeah, it might go back. This is interesting for remedies. And so, a court may award a term of speed for a public body having to respond to a privilege lawsuit. So that's something else that is in there. That has not happened, you have not had that problem. I don't know in other communities that it's happened once. This is also just something to be mindful of. If there's an official or officer of a public body or within the agency of the city, if they, in bad faith, violate the right to know law, then that person can be held personally liable for their bad faith conduct, up to two thousand dollars. And when I talk about public body and public agency, you guys know what I'm talking about? So, public body is the city council, is you, is the zoning board, is the planning board, is the heritage commission, okay? It's all these boards and commissions, that's the public body. The agency is the administrative departments that the city manager just walked through. That's the agency. So there's the agency side of city government, and there's the public body side of city government, okay? And so there's employees are on the agency side, and then there's officials on the public body side, okay? These are more remedies. Courts may enjoy future actions if there's some type of violation, or remedial training. So you might have to do this again. Oh, and this is, you know, I just throw this in there, we talked about the records portion. It could, I guess, happen in the public body section. But actually, if there is a right to know request and somebody destroys that document, then it's a misdemeanor. So, you know, we want to be cautious not to engage in that kind of... Code of Ethics. Okay, that was right to know law. All good, any questions? Any answers right to know law, sunshine, we're good? Yes?
So I still, but the closed meetings, non-public, the city clerk holds those minutes in some space?
Yes.
Of some place or something?
Yes, they're sealed.
Locked cabinet or something like that?
Yeah, they're sealed, yeah. And there's a process to unseal them now that finally, the legislature has come forward to advise us how to do that. Code of Ethics. So we do have a code of ethics here in Concord. There's a small section of ethics also in the charter that you may have paid attention to. It's also addressed in our city council rules. But generally, let me just, I think the best way to do this is just to read this. This is in section one-six of the city council ordinance. This is, "The citizens of Concord are entitled to a fair, ethical, and accountable city government. The effective functioning of democratic government requires that all its officials, whether elected or appointed, comply with both the letter and spirit of the laws and be independent and impartial in their judgment and actions." So that's the purpose section of our ethics ordinance. So, the next, I guess, most significant section of the ordinance is conflict of interest. So, we want to avoid situations on any public body where a member of that public body has a conflict of interest. So what is a conflict of interest? So that's this definition here, which is in our ethics ordinance. A conflict of interest exists when an officer or elected official takes an action or makes a decision that would affect their financial interest, the financial interest of the officer or elected official's family member, or the interest of any organization in which the officer or elected official or the officer or elected official's family member is an employee of the organization or a member of its governing body. So, financial interest is the key, right? Are you going to make money on this vote? For employment with the city of Concord and for any other governmental entities, the conflict of interest shall exist when the matter before the public body involves a department for which the officer or elected official or officer or elected official's family member is employed. So, if you have a family member employed with the city of Concord, and they work for a certain department, the idea is that you might have a conflict of interest if that department comes up for evoking for the city council.
And then you can excuse yourself at that time, right?
Yes, and we can talk about that. Conflict of interest shall also exist for an officer or elected official whose family members employ with the city Concord when such family member is a member of the union in the city and the public body is discussing any collective bargaining matters in a non-public, I'm sorry, non-meeting under RSA ninety-one A relative to collective bargaining. So the same idea, if you have a spouse or family member who is a member of one of our six collective bargaining units, the idea is you have a conflict of interest, not to be in the room you're discussing, when the council's discussing the cost items relative to that contract. So recusal, and that's when you step aside. So whenever a matter comes before any city of Concord public body, no officer or elected official shall introduce, ask questions, speak on or vote on any motion, ordinance, resolution, or issue on which they have a conflict of interest that we defined, and shall disclose the reason for the conflict of interest prior to the public body's discussion on the matter. Or if discussion has occurred, then as soon as the conflict becomes known to the officer or official. Understood? Easy? If the matter before the public body is a legislative matter, the officer or elected official who has a conflict of interest may remain seated at the table during the term of the recusal. If the matter is a quasi-judicial matter, they need to leave the room physically. So, everyone know legislative, quasi-judicial. Most of the work that the city council does is legislative. Quasi-judicial is more in the realm of planning board and zoning board. If there's a question, we'll let you know if there's something that comes with quasi-judicial. Oh, and this is if you, mostly for planning or zoning, if the matter, if the member before the public body, like, say they're a member of the zoning board, and they need a variance at their own property, well, then they have a constitutional right to present that issue to the zoning board. They may be, obviously, in the room to present that matter. And that's the exception here.
That's good.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
As an attorney, as I understand it, I could not represent a client before any of these boards, correct?
Yeah, I believe that's representing, that's also in the ethics order.
So, and that would apply, like, if you're an engineer or any sort of professional?
But we can talk about that, but that's before your own body, yes, yeah.
Yeah, as councilor, yes.
Right.
So when you say around that, you mean if you are sitting on the zoning board or you are sitting on the planning board? Because you can be a city councillor, but you are not on the zoning board. And this is, variance is needed, or whatever needed. You can be there as a citizen, and you can testify as a citizen.
Then that's the key. You need to, the council rules, we'll talk about that, we'll get into that in just a minute. But yeah, you can testify as a citizen, you're not there as a city councillor, you are there as a landowner in the city of Concord, and you haven't given up your land-owning rights by being a member of this public body, right?
I just wanted to enforce what he was saying.
Right.
Because representing, when you get paid, then that's a representation. But when you are not getting paid, that's not a representation, if it's an individual, yeah.
Just also know there's a board of ethics. And that board of ethics, at least there's a board of ethics in our zoning, in our ordinances, at thirty-three twenty-nine. It consists of five persons, three appointed by the mayor, two appointed by the city manager, all of whom are subject to approval by the majority of the city council. Just know this, we're stepping out now from ethics, and now we're just going into state law. State law, there's, I would say, forty-two-one, and that's an oath required to hold your office, and you will be taking that oath tomorrow. Also, under forty-two-one, they do discuss about disclosure of confidential information. So for instance, if you're in a non-public meeting and you're subject to some type of, you're privy to confidential information of the public body, it provides here that without limiting, other causes for such a dismissal shall be considered a violation of the county officers or the city for the officer to divulge to the public any information which the officer learned by virtue of their official position or in the course of their official duties. So, if you learn confidential information on, you know, land acquisition, the idea is to keep it confidential until it can be disclosed. Just real quick, we talked about this, six labor unions in the city. What's that? So we had the CPSA, which is the Police Supervisors Association, the Patrolman Association, the firefighters, IFF is the firefighters, CFOA is the fire officers, UAW are, it's not United Worker, it is United Auto Workers, but they're mostly our clerks. And ASME is mostly our general services employees. And we talked about this, your role relative to collective bargaining is to approve cost items in each of those collective bargaining agreements. City council rules. We'll go through this fairly quickly, you might have them laid out. I can't link to it unfortunately, but this will keep us moving quickly. I made this little cheat sheet here. Sections one through three is the presiding officer and the agenda, how that's determined. We have section four, which talks about the ordinance adoption and resolution adoption process. Section five, it talks about individuals and citizens coming to address and speak before the city council. Section six talks about how councillors disclose conflicts, how we vote, attending and the process for attending non-city council meetings. You should take close attention to that if you attend on, attending meetings outside of the city council.
Could we just repeat that, what was that point?
Section six D, I can read that if somebody would like to, I'd go through that. So six D, is everyone there?
Yep.
Provides, councillors who are not appointed members of a city council subcommittee, city council board, or city council commission, may attend meetings of those subcommittees, boards, and commissions in their individual capacity and not as a city councillor, excluding the personnel field board, unless you're required to attend by subpoena. Councillors who are not appointed members of the subcommittee, board, or commission shall not be deemed members of that subcommittee, board, or commission. Where a councillor elects to provide testimony or comment before a board, commission, or subcommittee, the following rules shall apply. The council shall declare at the outset and on the record that the councillor is present in his or her individual capacity as an interested citizen and not on behalf at the request, or at the request of the council. The council shall refrain from stating or implying that the councillor's position or opinion is that of the council. The council shall refrain from directing city staff or the board or commission to take any action on behalf of the councillor. And the council shall observe any rules or procedures or protocol that apply to any other private citizen testifying before the board or commission. To the extent that a quorum of the city council exists at any such meeting, councillors shall not testify or comment upon a matter of which the city council has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power in accordance with RSA ninety-one A. Yes?
So, just give us an example. So let's say I'm not on the transportation policy advisory committee, but I want to attend a meeting. I can go to that meeting, but if I make any comments or whatever, I'm there attending as a, myself, as an individual person and not as a councillor.
That's right.
Now, if, for example, there was a matter that I referred to that committee, if I referred a matter as councillor to T-PAC, and then I attend that meeting, am I still allowed to attend then as a councillor, or am I still, am I not allowed to?
You're there according to these rules in your individual capacity.
So even if I referred an item as a councillor, still only as an individual?
Individual capacity, you want to make that clear.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I'm a little confused though, because he said if I refer myself as a councillor. And you just said earlier that you should not refer yourself as a councillor. You always should refer yourself as a private citizen.
No, he said if he referred the subject matter to T-PAC, not himself.
No, he said if you refer yourself as a councillor.
No. Yeah, no, what I was saying was, I was trying to make a distinction of the, you know, if I'm there because there was an item that was referred to me by one of my constituents that was referred to T-PAC, can I attend that meeting as a councillor? And the answer is no. Even if that, even if I was referred, even if it was a matter of a direct referral that I was trying to be present for, for my constituents, I still can't attend that meeting as a councillor. I can still only attend it as a private citizen, right?
You can't speak.
You can't speak as a councillor, that's what I meant.
You can speak as well, but you cannot speak as a councillor.
Right, that's what I meant, yeah.
And that's why I said the reference, because those are very distinct words. Because when you say I refer myself as a councillor while you are testifying, you are referring yourself as somebody. But if you get a referral from your constituent and you are going to go to share your opinion as a private citizen, then you are guilty.
That's right, correct.
You've kind of adopted this language, it is blown, and he was Jennifer Kredovic, and I am appearing before you today. While I'm the representative of Ward Three, I am here in my individual capacity as a resident, and then you speak. That's actually how you say it, declare it. And you have to declare it in that manner before you testify. So I've attended the traffic operations committee. And sometimes my, you know, I'm going there about an issue that a constituent exactly what you had said. And they'd asked me, oh, Council Brown, do you want to talk about this? Sometimes I'm like, you know, and I will just kind of share what my constituents shared. Am I, is that wrong? Should I not be doing that?
Well, I think there's a certain protocol, according to the council rules that the city council has adopted. It states that if you're going to go to a separate committee, that you state that you were there in your individual capacity testifying.
Oh, okay. Because they had, they said, do you want to talk about this? So I just assumed I was there representing that.
Yeah, so I would just always defer to the council rules when going and testifying before a committee, okay? And so, we can move on here. It talks about when roll call is necessary, anyone can request a roll call vote. Section eight talks about councillors not using city property or entering into contracts between themselves and the city. It talks about matters withdrawn, that may be withdrawn before a vote. It talks about one year of leaving office. You may not represent entities before committees for money. It talks about questions under debate in that process under section twelve. Motions may be required to be in writing at the mayor's direction. Committee minutes to the city council. You'll see every month that these various committees that you're talking about are submitting those committees to the city council for review. This one matters filed with the city council on or before five P M. of meeting. There's the reconsideration rule that I don't think we all need to go through now, but if it comes up, we'll learn it very quickly. The reintroduction of a matter is not something that is allowed under a certain time period, set forth in the rules. Talks about nominations, how those occur. It also talks about, under section nineteen, that any of these rules that we just discussed that are laid out here in may be suspended with a vote of the city council. And then, section twenty, at the very end, we define what you all are, so. Those are the city council rules. That in a nutshell is my piece. So welcome all of you to the city council. We have, I think, a lot of work to do starting next Monday. And feel free to reach out to me, my contact information is on the website. I think City Manager Spell has sent that to you as well. And enjoy, it's a lot of great work. Okay, we'll pick it up at the, so we've gotten, what Jim has taken us through is item number ten on the agenda. Item number eleven...
Item number eleven is the city council priorities and you see there's three tabs there. The, the one in the middle, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three city council priorities, are the priorities that the city council set two years ago, I think probably January or February, about February, two years ago. And that's a session that you'll have together and you'll determine what your priorities are. You can see they're really, because you could spend weeks word smithing, you can see they're really just little phrases about things that we want the organization to focus on for the next two years. So that's a meeting, an additional meeting that you'll have coming up to focus on that. And then what you get from the administration is a quarterly status report, which you can see is the last item there. So every quarter will give you a report based on those individual items. It's any progress that has been made specifically related to that. And then we just keep updating it quarter after quarter after quarter. So really what you will receive probably, I think at the January meeting, the January or February meeting, January might be too quick, is the, the last quarter of this, this set that was set down, because that'll be eight quarters of those results. And then of course we'll start fresh with your new priorities, where you establish where those are. A lot of them sometimes carry over, things like balanced budgets and economic, various focuses on economic development, housing elements, but that again, it's all up to you to set what you would like those priorities to be. And then you can see the top one, twenty twenty-four, twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-five, tons of priorities. There are many because you haven't had the meeting yet to establish those, so that will, that will fill in over time as we go through that. Any questions on, on the priorities? And those, those quarterly priority reports are on your city council agenda every quarter and then you'll take them, you'll come in as a consent report, you'll take a look at those. And generally, if you have questions about those or if there's certain things you wanted to, just get ahold of me and we can always add information to those if there's more depth you'd like to see in something or if you're giving too much depth in something you're like, really not interested in all the, the details about this, let me know and I won't, you know, have staff spend all that time putting, putting that stuff together. But it's a good way to keep a rolling record of, of what you've focused on. That way, if your constituents ever talk to you about something, say about grants, you have something to go right to immediately in front of you that you could always tap into and say, oh, here's the, and the grants we have for related to parks and recreations.
So the priorities, are they cumulative? So if I look at the last priorities, I'm seeing all of the reports. I don't have to go through each one.
Right, we'll, we'll change some of the tenses and things, we'll say something was coming up and then once it's passed, we'll, we'll update it or something, think that we're going, you know, we're going to apply for this grant, but then we receive it, we'll update that we received it or it was unsuccessful and then we'll apply for something else. But you're, you're correct.
When does the priority setting meeting occur typically in the?
Sometime usually end of January, beginning of February. It's when, because really you're having three meetings in a week right now, you have a meeting tomorrow, then you have a meeting Monday, it's when you can find your schedules to do it. Usually, you know, you do it after, obviously you've been seated, because you need to be acting as a councillor and then you'll determine when to do it. Usually the mayor will give you a couple, couple of weeks notice so you can put together your thoughts and then you really just come together and hash out with you what you'd like to work on. Okay? So that is city council priorities. And then the next item is fiscal goals. Now fiscal goals are generally established by, and they don't change a whole lot, because you want your fiscal work to be structured going, going through the years. And they're set, determined initially by fiscal policy advisory committee, which makes recommendations to the city council. So these are all adopted by the, by the city council. So you can look at things like, let's just go to, if you see that tab right on the first page, debt management. So you can see there's, there's a couple of goals associated with that, really two, two goals. Limit general fund debt service expenditures to between ten and fourteen percent of total appropriations. We're at ten.
Nine, nine point seven.
We're at nine point seven, so a little bit below, so you have a little bit of, you have a little bit of space in there. And manage debt burden to seventy percent payoff within ten years. So we try to very quickly pay off our debt to be able to save interest, right? So that's kind of the goal. You can always change those. And that's something that the fiscal policy advisory committee, when it starts to up again, will look at, they'll, they'll go through these and say, there's a few things that we need to update and then we'll make recommendations to the full city council. The full city council will review those and decide whether they want to stay with them or they got to make some changes. Yes.
So say we wanted to do like what Manchester did, that no city pay rate would be lower than fifteen dollars. Is that, that would be determined in a document like this first before it would go to a budget, for example?
I don't know if you'd need to put that in your fiscal goals, that would be more, that, this is, this is more focused on the overall budgetary policies and whatnot, but that's something you could do as a, as a policy, just as a city council behold. You probably want to send it to the fiscal policy advisory committee, just as an example, and say, what's the financial impact of something like this and, you know, how would it play out over the years? And for example, if I remember correctly, I think when we asked this question during budget, maybe councillor, I asked this question, I don't think we, we have anybody who's paid under fifteen dollars now.
Good.
So I don't, you asked that last year, right?
Thank you.
So, but, but I think, I think there might have been one pay grade that was like fourteen ninety to eighteen dollars, but nobody, we didn't ever start on anybody's, that's probably all changed, so. So yeah, but, yeah, this is more of financial statements and things like that, but if you have ideas like that, we can figure out someplace, if at someplace.
I guess I'm trying to figure out the A plus B equals C. I get how like the priorities, the document you show us before this, so this is driven sort of by city council and the fiscal committee?
And the fiscal policy advisory committee is only made up of city councils.
Gotcha.
So it's really you, it's a subgroup of you making recommendations to the rest of you about what, all of you, what you'd like to do.
Nice.
Okay. Any other questions on that? And then fiscal information, following right after that, number thirteen. So what Brian Lebrun, the deputy city manager of finance, puts together, working with all the departments, he gives just a general statement, you'll see the first two or three pages of that and we're really just under the first few months of this, there hasn't been a whole lot of changes. He just give you some highlights, so you don't have to read all the individual Excel spreadsheets on the budget, but he provides those also about where we are with our finance, how's things going with all the major revenue categories, is there anything special that's happened with expenditures related to, related to something? So for example, motor vehicle registration is slightly ahead of fiscal year twenty-three's budget, so that's last year's budget and we're on, on target with twenty-four percent year to date. Well, we're really at twenty-five percent year to date, so it's slightly below, but it's close enough given the variations that come along. Why, why he puts that one in there is because motor vehicle registration is the second largest revenue that we get. So that's why it's important to keep track of that.
Not at least.
No, not yet, so. So the, so, so we have that, but then again, if you want to look into individual details, go back to the next sixteen pages worth of information, you can look at, at line item, what's in there. Any questions on that? Again, and we'll provide you those on, on a, that goes to the city council on a quarterly basis also, right?
Yes.
That goes to the city council on a quarterly basis, so you'll see those. Fiscal policy advisory committee looks at it on a regular basis, so they saw something that would, that they thought the full council should be made aware and immediately would make it aware to the council. Item number fourteen, this is, the veteran city councillors see this on a regular basis. You, you'll see two pieces here, one is a joint memo from the deputy city manager of finance, Brian Lebrun and then Jonathan Rice, a director of real estate assessments, and it gives you an explanation of what's going on with the property taxes and the different assessments that have occurred and also looks at, excuse me, the property tax rate for the city portion of the taxes and also explains the schools and the, two, two separate school districts. Of course, be aware, and I think most of you are aware of this, you've probably experienced this during your campaigns, that if you're in the, essentially the Petticoat School District area, one and two, you're, you know, the, your city's budget is about thirty percent, thirty-one percent of the taxes, when somebody writes their tax, the procedure is there this week for the most part, goes to the city. If you're in the Parkers School District, it's about thirty-five percent goes to the city. So when you get those calls from people, when the tax bills come out, so when people write for their March or January, you'll, we want you to have that information available so you can explain to people the things that you're responsible for and what you can listen to. So that's the first memo. The second memo is from Jonathan Rice, the director of real estate assessments, and that looks at your individual neighborhoods, what's gone up and down with values, real values, market values and where your neighborhoods, individual neighborhoods are in comparison to what's going on in the city and channel. So that will give you a good idea about if you're, if you're a Petticoat, what values are you doing there versus what values you're doing in Jim Swasher's area, Ward Seven, you know, so. And it does, does change quite dramatically from neighborhood to neighborhood, depending on the type of homes, what's hot at the time and what's, what's for sale at the time. So, so you want to pay attention to that, number two. There's a lot of information in those three pages. And then the last item, very simply, is a staff listing. And this again is in your budget, you'll see this every single year and it lists every single position in the city and really looks at the last three fiscal years of how it's changed over time. So if you look at, let's say look at the legal department as an example, on page, excuse me, on page one, you'll see an eight point five six folks in the legal department is a total between full-time and part-time, one to nine point five six, then ten point two nine. And that's because what's changed in the legal environment over the years in terms of what's handled at the county level, what's, what's gone on with state changes, what we've had to do with staffing, so you bring those, those changes to the city councils on a budget time and they're reflected in here. So you'll be able to look back and see how things have evolved over time. So when people call you and say, well, you're, you're doing too much here or you're not doing enough there, you'll be able to know exactly how many employees we have, what they, what they do, and this is all, this is all online too. When you go online to the city's website, you'll be able to see by position, what that position is and what the job description is and what they're responsible for. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I think that all the pieces that we generally covered during the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Did you want to say? Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Did you want to entertain any other questions?
Yeah, in general, sure.
For those of us who've never owned property or paid a property tax, Bill, could we get an example of a, of what residents receive, like just a generic, not someone's actual bill? Because I'm sure I'm not the only renter here, I think it would be really helpful to know what our constituents go through.
So sure, so Brian, did you want to, want me to do that or if you want to correct me and I'll do it? I'll start. Let me start, you, you correct. So you correct me. So I'm asking for a physical.
I physically would like to see how it looks if you get a bill.
Okay, so you'll get a piece of paper this week and, and, as I said, you enhance, we, we bill twice a year, but you, but the payments are due quarterly, okay? So for example, I just paid my January taxes today and I have another bill due first week of March?
March thirty-first.
March, March thirty-first?
March thirty-first.
I got time saves for that one. So March, March thirty-first and, and what you'll see on the bill will be several things. We break out by what the total, total amount is due, if you have anything overdue, that's, that's on there also. But you'll have what the city, what you owe the city, what you owe the school district, what you owe the county and what you owe the state educations. And that will all be on there and you'll see by, by the actual dollar amount of what the total bill is, that's on there. In addition to that, we give the history of, Brian, do you jump in here, Brian? Sir, I don't usually read this.
I feel like everybody, maybe one or two of us knows this, that's what I was thinking. To get it separately might be the kinder thing, because I think the renters are probably in the minority.
I think where it, it can be the helpful, Brian, maybe you can start with draft example. That's one, but also the fiscal year, because when you said the March and January, people might say, oh, we are in twenty twenty-four, but we are paying a bill of twenty twenty-three because of the fiscal year. So I think that will be helpful for people to understand as well.
Without, without getting complicated, you have the fiscal year and the tax year, but let's not go into that. I guess what I would like to say is, I can send a copy of the most recent bill that went out as of December, I think it was December eleventh or December eighth. So I'll send a copy of that, generic, I'll cross off, you know, pertinent issues, I'll probably send the city managers.
Do you live, I already know if you live in Concord.
That's okay. Yep. But, but this is probably a great time to also mention is that, you know, the bill that we have now is going to change when we get to the main bill, because we're implementing a new tax system. And the new tax system is going to look a little bit different than the bill that you're, that I'm going to send to you. And as soon as we have that bill ready, I'll send a sample of that new bill out as well and then online, and, and any taxpayer would be able to go in and look at their bills and the history of their bills for the past four years. So all that information will be out there and it will continue to accumulate year after year after year. So I'll send copies tomorrow to the whole council and then everybody will have that information. Okay? Anybody else have any just general questions?
Well, technically this part of the meeting is the city administration's part of the meeting, but I want to personally thank you as mayor for coming, for participating in the icebreaker concession. Particularly want to thank the returning councillors who normally don't sit in on an orientation. I want to thank you all for your time and I want to thank all of you, returning councillors and newly elected councillors for your commitment to the city, as is evidenced by your presence here tonight and by your service throughout the next five years. So thanks very much and have a great night.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.